Trump administration, it's on the training that goes along with that. And then the fourth. From himself, but we're going to break down every single chapter and every single topic in it. Two important points, it's a hundred and eighty day implementation. This is not a ten year project. This is six months from inauguration day. And number two, all the chapters in here are written by people in Trump's order, or at least most of them.
That's right. Yeah, and that was by design. And let's, let's keep in mind that in April twenty twenty two, right from when President Trump started getting off the ground, Trump went to a Heritage Foundation event, just like the way that he wrote the book, with the former T. J. Roberts' book. And he announced, not only did he praise.
Trenton City Council meeting, August the first, five thirty P. M. This meeting is officially called to order. Let us stand for the flag salute. I.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to Public Laws nineteen seventy five, Chapter two thirty one. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trenton Times and the Trentonian newspapers, posted on the first floor bulletin board in City Hall, filed in the city clerk's office and posted on the city of Trenton's website. Formal action will be taken, Mr. Garcia.
Certainly, roll call. Councilwoman Edwards.
Present.
Vice President Figaro Kettinburg.
Present.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Harrison.
Present.
Councilwoman Williams.
Present.
Council President Feliciano.
Present.
Myself, Brandon Garcia, municipal clerk, present. Legislative Council, Mr. Edward Cologi. And City Attorney, Mr. Wesley Bridges.
Present.
Thank you. On your call, Madam President.
You may continue.
Certainly. Madam President, if you'd like, I'll read the invocation at this time.
Thank you.
Almighty God, who holds the fate of man and nation, we most humbly beseech thee to bless this our city, these deliberations, and these thy servants, that they may act with wisdom and understanding for the good of our community and thy greater glory. Amen.
Amen.
And Madam President, is my understanding at this time, you have a presentation of interim directors?
Yes, by Mayor.
The Honorable Mayor, Brigasiura.
Yes, thank you. One second, Mayor, I'm so sorry. Mr. Garcia, can we?
Mr. Mayor, we have a small technical difficulty with that. If you want to press the button for the.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark, Council President, distinguished members of council. I'm here to introduce four highly qualified individuals who will be serving as interim directors of the key city departments. Under our city's charter, they will have ninety days to perform their duties, after which I will seek your advice and consent for their continued service, either on an interim basis or for permanent positions. First, I'm proud to present Maria Richardson as our interim business administrator. Maria has been a dedicated city servant and worked for the city for over eighteen plus years, showcasing exceptional leadership and expertise. She currently has a PhD in education and is currently pursuing a PhD in public administration. Her extensive experience includes leading the Department of Recreation, Natural Resources and Culture, and acting as our Director of Health and Human Services. Her resume speaks volumes about her capabilities and dedication to our city. Next, we have Paul Harris for Recreation, Natural Resources and Culture. Paul has been a faithful service to Trenton for over fourteen years, contributing significantly to our community through various roles. His wide ranging experience includes account payable, budgeting, communications, construction management, legislative affairs, payrolls, personal management, recreational programming, maintenance, and the website management. Paul's expensive, extensive experience and dedication make him an invaluable asset to our city. Dr. Carlos Diego Minicapelli will be stepping in as our interim Director of Health and Human Services. Dr. Diego has been with us for over the past year, effectively administering our community development block grant program. His academic background and hands on experience in public health and community services position him well to lead this crucial department. Finally, I'm pleased to introduce Arch Liston for the Housing and Economic Development Department. Arch has been with Trenton for over two years and brings a wealth of experience from other jurisdiction, having served as township manager and business administrator in other locations. His knowledge and strategic vision will be critical in advancing our housing and economic development goals. I am confident that these individuals will serve our city with distinction, and I look forward to your collaboration and support as they transition into these roles. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mayor Goseura. At this time, we'll call each interim director up one by one. So if any of my council colleagues have any questions that you would like to ask, I would ask that we do so at this time. We'll start with interim business administrator Maria Richardson. Good evening.
Good evening, Council President and all members of the council.
Thank you. Are any council colleagues, do you have any questions or comments for acting or interim business administrator Richardson?
Council President.
Yes, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you. Ma'am, my question is, if you could tell us how had your previous positions, how have they collectively prepared you for this new position as business administrator?
Well, as the Director of Recreation, Parks and Recreation, I have managed a certain times over four hundred staff members. So I have a, a strong management experience that would be very applicable to the position of business administrator. In addition to that, I have been really involved with the, the design of the budget for several of the departments, not just for the Department of Recreation, and have been involved in many of the conversations interdepartment, right? So I, I am very well versed about the budget for each one of the departments and how the expenditures work for every single department. So that it's knowledge that I already have, aside from managing my, my own budget. In addition to that, I have been involved heavily with the procurement process. I am a certified QPA as well. And one thing that I, I think that I could use very well as a business administrator is my ability to go after funding. During the last few years in the Department of Recreation, I have been able to get for the city probably over twenty five, thirty million dollars in grants during the last six years. And as, as you know, when I set it to work for the Department of Recreation, the budget was three hundred thousand dollars. And we have, basically, the department was non-existent. So we were able to recreate the department, and it's probably one of the departments that work smoother throughout the city. So I think that my experiences in the Department of Recreation in the last eighteen months, in the Department of Health, dealing with different crises, probably it's not knowledge of all of you, but during the COVID pandemic, I was one of the individuals that I was responsible for, responsible for the planning of the city's response for COVID vaccine. And I was pretty much the field person along with the, one of the field individuals along with the health officer and her staff facing the pandemic in the city of Trenton. So yes, I think that my experiences in the Department of Recreation and Health will have great use in the Department of, for, for the business administrator position.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilwoman Frisbee.
Good evening, Director Richardson and Director. I have two questions. The first one, can you tell us some of the items that you've helped move forward in the city that will help you with the role that you're, what will help show how you're moving, plan to move the city forward in this new role?
Well, for, for the Department of Recreation, for example, we, when I, when the mayor appointed me six years ago, close to six years ago, the first thing that we did was to use the information that we have at hand at that point, participated in the diagnostic of recreation facilities and that sort of things, and were able to put a long term plan for improvements for the city. So one of the things that we have been able to do is, is participate, design and implement a, a long term vision for the Department of Recreation. And we are now seeing the results of the planning that we started six years ago. And, and then the ability to raise money for the city to be able to pay for those projects. We have some great projects that will be coming to fruition at the end of the year, next year. But that is just part of a long term vision that we were able to, to put together six years ago.
Thank you. And my last question, and I'll just say, what, what would help you to, in the position that you're in now, what would you say? What do you need in this department to help move it forward? What would you ask, ask for to help move this department forward in the seat?
And divided commitments of all department directors to move the mayor's vision forward.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other counsel? Questions, comments? Councilman Harrison?
Director Richardson, maybe you could talk about today, about today's breaking ground over in Unity Square Park.
That is a great example of planning many years ago. Several, in two thousand and eighteen, we started to talk about building a soccer field in Unity Park, Columbus Park at that time. And there was a little bit of rejection because that was a baseball field, right? But then Council, Council Harrison realized, he saw it there on the field, that reality is that we have a great population in Trenton playing soccer. And we have probably eight children playing baseball, basically because we were paying them twenty dollars to come to the games, right? So it was really easy to decide, okay, this is what the community wants. This is what we should be planning to do there. And after several years of planning and seeking funding, today we finally brought ground to install our first mini pitch in Unity Park. The community is absolutely thrilled about seeing the heavy vehicles breaking ground this morning there.
Thank you.
Anyone else? So I guess the question that I would have, and I'm, and we realize, right, that this is not advice and consent for us, but we're actually being proactive in just asking some questions so that when the time does come, if we hear what we hear today, and then we can watch and see what happens over the next ninety days, we will be able to give an affirmative vote either way, based upon what we discuss here, what we hear, and then what we see. We know your strong suits in, in recreation, and you also took on the acting role of Health and Human Services. But now you step up a notch to the role of business administrator, which is quite different, a lot different in its capacity. You spoke about your budgeting experience, your ability to lead staff and everything like that. I'd like you to talk about the, the, your skill set when it comes to grants and your knowledge of grants and the ability that you have or don't have when it comes to securing grants and funding for the city. So can you speak about that?
Absolutely. I, I always said that I like to go after the money. And that's why you, you are witnesses of how many times we come before you to, to get a resolution to apply and to accept funding. We, during the last six years in the Department of Recreation, we have been able to raise over twenty five million dollars. And so, and right now, we are in the process of writing a, a grant for twenty million dollars to hopefully complete the Assam Pink Greenway, right? So I, I really take a lot of pride in going after the money because I, I think that recreation is a very important part of a viable community, right? If we don't have good recreation programs, good parks, and we thrive to, to improve a little bit those, those, our facilities every year. But I also know that the city really cannot afford to, to do all those improvement programs that we would like for our facilities. So I feel really driven to go after federal money, county money, state money, private funding. I, I really take a lot of pride in doing that, and I have been very successful in doing that. So I hope to continue to, to say that, to continue to, to have the same train as a business administrator.
Thank you. And with that, you would also have to have a, a good relationship with the mayor, with the other administrative offices, but also with the Department of Community Affairs as well. So can you speak to that as far as your ability to be able to work with other outside entities? You spoke of county and everything, but with them specifically?
Well, I, I, I think that building bridges is, is really important for each one of us, right? The city cannot accomplish everything on it, on its own. So I, I see it as my responsibility to try to tap to as many outside resources as possible. So I try to establish contacts and good relationships everywhere that I go. And I think that, that is key for each one of us. Each one of us should be doing that, just contacting people and being resourceful to them so that they can be resourceful to us as well. So I, I am a, a bridge builder in a sense.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right. At this time, we will have interim Director Paul Harris come.
Good evening.
Good evening. At this time, are, do any council members have any questions for Mr. Harris?
Council President?
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Good evening, Mr. Harris.
Good evening.
So I've seen you operate in several different hats throughout the city. And I'm going to ask you pretty much the same questions I've asked Director Richardson. And that is, what in your previous position has helped prepare you for the position that you're now in the interim seat to, to help you with that, moving it forward?
Well, I would say the first thing is personnel experience is important. And between multiple departments, hiring, hiring people through finance. First of all, let me just start this way. Noticing, the first step is to notice there's a need, right? Once you notice there's a need, then you have to understand the process and understanding how personnel works. So on my end, what that means is you have the budget in front of you. You understand exactly the process with DCA personnel backgrounds, medicals, putting a timeline together. And then finding the right candidates, understanding the proper mechanism to do that, union, the website, indeed.com, vetting those candidates, bringing them in, placing them, testing them out, because now what we do is we have the seasonal program. And the old days, we used to hire people and then hope they did great. And then you have ninety days. Now what we do is we hire them through a seasonal program for a little longer, and then we really know if they're made for it, and then you still have ninety more days if they're hired permanently. And it's worked out perfectly because we're allowed to weed people out. So that's good experience there because you need to know, have personnel management. Budgeting, multiple departments. It's understanding the financial system we have here, admins, being able to go in there and run a million different reports, being able to do a budget analysis, you know, being able to do payroll projections. Like now, what I'm doing now is I brought my laptop, because I'm doing payroll projections for the rest of the year because that's important for me, because then I need to know every two weeks, this is what we're going to be spending. And we'll, based on what we've agreed, based on what you're going to give us, do we have enough? You know, or if there's any wiggle room, that's important. I would also say what prepared me as well is you need to be, my motto is, and you see it through my pools, pools are my claim to fame here, because you should see how they were when I inherited them, like eleven years ago. I believe that we can improve people's quality of life through public spaces. Simple, I can't change the world, but I can change the smaller the area. So what we've done, our public swimming pools, and now what we're doing is we're migrating to parks and rec centers and other spaces, is we're saying we want world class facilities, and that's what we're doing here. And that's why we're going to, before the end of the year, you'll have twelve brand new playgrounds, among other things, because we deserve the best. We pay enough, right? And that's the other thing. So you find my, you find me when you're calling me, I'm in the field. I'm in the field because I like to be behind the scenes, but to be successful here, you have to be willing to get dirty. So if you know me, and what I've done is, there's nothing that my staff do that I won't do. Nothing, nothing like I, when I mean, I have pictures I can show you. When, when it comes to draining the pools, we're getting out and cutting grass, that's what I've done. Because you know what, sometimes you're on a timeline, and I need to be able to show them, listen, this is the way we do business. The other thing is you have to be a disciplinarian, and what I've learned is it's hard managing people. If you ever manage people, you know it's hard managing people. And civil service and the union don't make it any easier. And I'm on the union executive board, and I, and I can say that confidently. So you have to be able to understand, what I learned long ago is stop expecting everybody to give you a hundred percent, all your staff. Sometimes the person that gives you one percent, two percent, that's, you have to, you have to accept that. And what you do is learn your staff, their strengths and weaknesses, and then work with them. Because again, sometimes you just can't let people go. Sometimes you, you can't move them. So what I learned is assess all my staff and determine, wait a minute, this is his strength, and that's where I put him or her. And that's, we've done that with parks because now we have a seven day schedule, two shifts, because the parks, the constant concern you often get is the parks are dirty. But we have staff around the clock, at least up until five thirty, that are always cleaning. But the point is, having people work those schedules, we're doing our best to really chase and keep them clean, but we needed to adapt because what we had, that Monday through Friday schedule wasn't working. That's an example of us saying that. An example is we're, we were out and being responsive to community needs. We were out at Carlos Negron Park. There was a plan, initial plan, and then residents, a bunch of them have come up and said, you know what? No, we want a playground. I had a conversation, a meeting with the director, and she said, you know what, let's build a playground. That's being responsive to people's needs because the people, you know, the fence. Some people oppose fences, but the neighborhood there said, we want a fence, we want to better close this.
Awesome.
So that's, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, that's good. So thank you very much for that. If you could ask for one, one thing to help assist you with this, in this department, what would that be?
It would be more money. It'd be more money. Yeah.
That's fair. Thank you very much. So that, that's all my questions. I, what I do want to just say before you sit down is I wanted, I didn't get an opportunity to say this. I want to thank the mayor for promoting from within. That's really important. So I commend you for seeing the value of our staff here. And I'm hopeful that all of you that are in your new seats will see the same thing with your current staff, that we will also do the same thing, that we will promote from, from within. So Mayor Goseura, I appreciate you, and I want to commend you for that. Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Any other council members? Questions, comments?
Council President?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Councilwoman Williams.
So Mr. Harris, I'm really glad to see that you are having this opportunity, as my colleague just alluded to, because you have started from, I remember you when you first were doing public affairs, a long, long time ago. So my questions are going to be asking kind of along the line of, you are very much in the field. When I think of natural resources, you're one of the faces that comes to mind right away. You've done everything. I've seen you out there with tents, I've seen you out there with pools, I've seen you out there doing just about everything. So how do you foresee, particularly in the next ninety days, making that transition from being so grounds on, so hands on, to maybe having to take that more of a corner office approach and that thirty thousand foot view?
Well, it's been hard to adapt even in the last three days because the amount of meetings. But listen, I have no choice to adapt. This is, this is, this burden, not a burden, this opportunity has been placed, given to me, and I'm going to do my best with it. But I'm telling you right now, I'm going to continue to be in the field. I'm, I can't, because my thing is, I know people who work here, who live in their office. And my thing is, this is, everything happens outside this building. So I can't be in the office. I will be responsive to my emails, to the phone calls, to the text messages, but the people are in the streets, and I need to be in the street with them to understand what their needs are.
Okay. Well, General Patton used to say, you lead from the front, so I'm glad to hear that. And my other question would be, what kind of training have you had already? Maybe you could talk about, and there are offerings of executive training. Would that be something that you would be able to take with this position?
Yes, I am always interested in learning more. I will say the weakness that I do have is that I live here, it's just me. So I have to be able to tell myself, Paul, you know what? There's nothing wrong with a certification, one or two. I just have to force myself, Paul, you gotta sort of back away from the desk in the field to get that. I could have had all the credentials in the world, but I've decided that the best thing I can do for myself in the town is to be here. And that's why, but I will be pursuing a variety of different things.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much.
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Harrison?
Yes, Paul. Many years, I see you, when you come through the back door, you're there for the community, you got a smiling face, you're helpful for the community, you work hard. I'm glad to see you're getting this opportunity, it's well deserved. You work hard and you believe in this great city. So I know you'll do great.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Council Vice President?
Hi, Mr. Harris. Congratulations again. Just a quick question, you kind of touched on what I wanted to ask you. I know you're new into this role, but I know you've had a part in the planning of the twenty six parks that are being rehabbed, coming up. And I just wanted to know if you could kind of kindly give us a little bit of input as to how those twenty six parks were chosen? You did talk about the needs of each park, you know, given the community, because I wanted to know, like, what, how do you guys establish what upgrades and what amenities go into each park in each situation? But you kind of touched on that. So just kind of, how were these parks chosen? And is there any type of algorithm or rhyme or reason to the order in which the parks will get completed?
So what I make it my business to do is visit at least like seventy sites, at least every two weeks. And it requires me to walk the perimeter. I should get up on the playground and see everything because, you know, and this keeps keeping my staff accountable as well. So as a result of doing that multiple times, what you get is you're put together a plan, wait a minute, this is what's wrong with this park, this is what this park. For example, Academy Street Park, right here by Clemente, having some issues with the concrete as a result of the trees. It's knowing that, so when I have the contractor who's doing concrete, who you approve, that he needs to target that area. In Mill Hill, for example, the issue there is the playground equipment, but also there's concrete again that needs to, you know, there's some old fashioned wooden tile. you know, there's some old-fashioned wooden ties that need to be replaced there. The basketball court needs to be replaced there. Edgewood Park, for example, that basketball court, I need to have padding on the poles, I need basketball system, you know. Those, so, and what I've done is, I'm a visual person. So the only way I succeed is by, I tell my staff, listen, you have to show me, bring me out there. And, and that's how I do it. So we took all that, we put it together, we sat with the director and said, listen, let's come up with a plan. And with community input as well, because a lot of the times, and I'm going to say this, it might not go right way, but we go back to the community to ask them when we already know. If you lived here long enough, you know what needs to be fixed. So we don't need to have another meeting to fix what we know should be fixed. So we put that plan together and that's, and you approved that $3.5 million, and that's what we're doing. So that's kind of the, the method to some of the playgrounds. Orange Street Park, it's in your ward, that's a combination of input from you, okay? Input from the school, input from other council people. And that, the equipment has arrived and they'll be working on that. After they finish that, they'll be moving to Villa Park, they'll be moving to Unity Park and then to Villa Park. And then my plan is then they'll be moving to Carlos Negron.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I look forward to your leadership in this position.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
Mine is not long at all. First of all, congratulations, Mr. Harris. I agree with everything that everyone said up here. But really quick, I know I spoke to, at the time, Director Richardson. And so I just want to so know that we're making that connection with the Carlos Negron, because I know the New Jersey State Troopers wants to collaborate. I don't know if that connection has been made, but I'm hoping that that will be done so that park can get even more than what we probably have planned for.
Yes, yes, I have a contact. And what we're doing is we're not moving, we're moving forward together.
Yes, good, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any other council people have anything?
So I just want to say, I just want to say this. I've had the, the awesome opportunity to work with Paul and watch him grow from when I was in the Finance Department, when I first got here. And Paul has always been a self-starter and always been a true advocate for the city of Trenton, performing with excellence and dedication, always giving of himself because he always wants things to be the absolute very best. Even when he was in the Finance Department, working on getting out the payments and everything, he had the system set up and he was looking at these pools. And I was like, what is this going on? And the pools were immaculate. He was like, I'll be right back. And he was taking care of that and he was taking care of this. And then you see how our, the website is running, everything else. And now to see you grow and move into this capacity, right? For the mayor to have trusted you all that time to just allow you to operate in your gifts, like you said, to look at people and know what their strengths are, to allow you to operate in your gifts and then to elevate you into this position. This is a testament of what recruiting and retention looks like. And this is what you would hope that every employer would do with their employees, before they look to hire from the outside, to look from within. So I'm excited to see you continue to grow, to see Trenton continue to grow under your leadership within the Department of Recreation, right? Leading, even though I know you'd like to be in the background, but it is your humility that will be your greatest strength because you care about the city for real. And so I'm, I'm happy for you and congratulate you and look forward to see what comes next.
And so next we'll have Dr. Diego.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello. Any council members have any questions for the doc?
Madam President?
Yes.
I have a statement that I would like to read, if you allow me to, introductory.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then we'll get into the questions.
Yeah.
And then we'll move on. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Madam President, Madam Vice President, and members of the City Council. I am honored to be appointed as interim Director of Health and Human Services for the City of Trenton. I am deeply committed to advancing and improving our health and social services systems to better serve our residents, particularly those that are homeless. My professional background and scientific research, medicine, academia has prepared me to address all of the challenges that we face and to develop effective solutions to those that are in need. Over the past year, my work with the city, under the CDVG ESG programs, and my involvement in the annual point-in-time count have provided me with invaluable insights into the needs of our community. These experiences have reinforced my commitment to develop stronger partnerships and improve our outreach programs. Since my appointment on Saturday, I have had the pleasure of meeting leaders of the various subdivisions, such as Mrs. Ruth Carter, Mrs. Janet Porter, Mrs. Yvette Cooper, and Mrs. Memphis Madden, among others. I also visited the city clinic, the senior centers, and many incredible individuals who have dedicated efforts to carry for our residents and seniors, of course. Their commitment, along with the support from our mayor, our business administrator, and the Board of Health is truly inspiring so far. I believe that together we can form a unified team to significantly improve our health and human services for the benefit of all Trenton residents. Additionally, I had the opportunity to visit our animal shelter and observe the recent improvements to the building and the restructured organizational command. Health and animal control are crucial in our city as many infectious diseases affecting humans originate in animals, such as rabies and influenza. So it is essential that we work together, not only at city, a whole here, but also with the community to reinforce ordinances and manage the number of animals that the shelter receives. Again, I thank you once again for this opportunity and I look forward to working together to make a positive impact in our community.
Thank you. At this time, any council members have any questions for the doctor? Councilwoman Frisbee?
Thank you, Council President. So Dr. Carlos Manocapelli?
Mina Capelli.
I did it. So one, I don't, I do thank you for reading that statement because I did not know a lot about you. And so you have helped fill in some of the gaps for me, so thank you. I do want to say, I appreciate your humility. That comes across right now to me as someone who stands in the position of humility. For you to say that you've gone out to meet those who are affected or who will affect your department, that speaks volumes to me. Making communication, having communication with your counter, your cohorts and just some members and touching the community, knowing that you cannot lead from sitting in that seat, as Paul alluded to so very strongly. It's good, yes, you do lead from in front, but yes, there's sometimes also you lead from the back as well. So you have to learn how to do it, do both ways. But I appreciate you, I appreciate your transparency. And I believe that you will be effective in the community. I commend the mayor again for seeing you and seeing the, what value you will bring to our community. And I think I'm, I will ask you only just one of the questions, and that is, if you had the opportunity to add one thing for your new department, what would be that ask that you would say that you need most right now?
At the moment, after going over all of this, meeting people and, and the clinic and everything, I would like to have unity with everybody and being part of a team. That's all we need right now.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any other council people, any questions or comments?
Council President?
Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you. So doctor, I just have two questions. As far as, we have a city that, we live in a city that has many healthcare disparities, a lot of which were identified during COVID nationally. And, you know, once COVID kind of died out, so did those intentions to fix healthcare disparities. So what do you foresee that you would like Trenton to take on to help our population, help our citizens with the healthcare disparities that they face here?
So right now, I'm doing my assessment of all of the, because Trenton has very good activity and activities and going out, like for example, the LED programs and all of those. We just have to enhance them and make partnerships with other organizations so we can reach out more, right? So that's the plan that I have so far. I'm doing my assessments right now. And I see that, you know, we can work together and do better for them, so.
Okay. And then systemically, where do you foresee where we are now versus where we were? I know you weren't perhaps on board of four years ago. But as far as being prepared for the next pandemic, should another one come?
Yes. So part of my assessment is to see the, the implementation of the prepare, respond, and prevent COVID, for example. So I have to go over the plan that they had during that time, review it, and maybe we can improve it. And so be ready for the next one. So it is part of my assessment.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Any other council? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
At this time, we will call interim Director Arch Liston for Housing and Economic Development.
Good evening.
Good evening. At this time, any council members have any questions for Mr. Liston? Councilwoman Frisbee?
Good evening, Mr. Liston. How are you?
I'm doing very well, thank you.
Good. So we know you've been in various roles with the city and we appreciate your dedication and your ability just to sit in the seats that you have sat in. With all that has been said so far, one, I want to just appreciate everyone and I'm just encouraging everyone to hear from those that are in the various departments that you are now walking into with an ear, knowing that they have the capability to be in the seats that they are sitting in right now. I would ask my question of you this evening would be, what has, how do you feel that you are prepared for this new position of being in the Housing and Economic Department from what you have already done in the City of Trenton? What has prepared you for this position?
When I first became the side of public administration, when I got off the police side of government, my first task was redevelopment and getting redevelopment plans prepared and implemented and getting through the process. So I've been involved with redevelopment in different communities, Hamilton, Bridgeton, Langston places over the past 20 years, 24, 24 years. So I have a substantial knowledge in redevelopment. Secondly, with, with housing, I was practiced my craft right through the Art of Regional Contribution Agreement issues, right through the issues with COA, the litigation that went on. I've kept abreast of the new legislation that was passed in, I think, January, where DCA is coming out with new numbers in September. And just being able to work with the community and meeting the needs of, from the redevelopment side, but also from the housing side. And I've worked in numerous communities with the same issues of Trenton. I worked in one place, Johnstown, Pennsylvania, as a city manager, where we had substantial vacant properties, just like we have here. So I've been through the, for lack of a better term, through the wars.
Thank you, Mr. Liston. Thank you, Madam President.
Any other council members, questions?
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you. Mr. Liston, my question is particularly coming back after a year. It's good to see you. I wanted to get an idea of having fresher eyes and seeing the city. Have your, any of your philosophies or your thoughts about economic development changed in this past year? Or maybe adapted to things?
It, it's funny, you sit back and you read a lot of what's going on in the community because is it, for some reason, you go back through all the other communities you've worked in. And I've tracked a lot of stuff that is going on and what is going on and have looked at different ways that we can expedite processes and so forth. In fact, one of the things I'll show you tonight, I have a draft resolution that I'm going to bring forward for next meeting. And looking at the hotel, Robling, looking at all the projects and see how we can, we can move the process along to, I, I think I have the ability to move these projects in a certain way and generate additional revenues for the city while we're trying to do some of the other projects.
Okay. And my second question would be, what opportunities do you foresee maybe over the next few years that we need to make sure we take advantage of?
Well, we've, we've got the housing market back in here. And we've got some, and we've got some really exciting stuff going on downtown. I mean, I'm shocked that, you know, we could potentially have, you know, 600 units coming online, market rate units downtown, which I think is going to revitalize the whole downtown. In a sense, you're going to have that density, that traffic diner on a daily basis with the, with the different demographic and people getting out and walking. So I, I think that downtown, and if we get state workers back, you know, another 40% of the time, would also help out. And I think that's one of the things that impacted us over the last, since COVID, is it's taking that percentage of customers walking by the stores in different places. That has, it devastated the downtown, it really did. So I, I'm excited about the downtown with the housing projects going on. And I think some of the things I'm going to bring forward about some potential, taking down some properties and doing some new RFPs and trying to get some new builds downtown from a commercial standpoint. So I, I think there's great opportunities at the right time and keeping in line with the market.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Any other council people?
Council President?
Councilwoman Edwards?
Thank you. So I'm sure you're aware of all of the housing and economic development issues that we have across the city, especially addressing our affordable housing shortage crisis. You see how rent is sky-high right now. And with our plethora of inventory of housing, I would like to hear a plan on how you plan on, at least within your interim period of 90 days, plan on addressing the needs of the housing crisis that we're experiencing in Trenton and in turn, replacing these properties back on a tax rule. And that helps with our revenue and our fiscal availabilities or abilities, sorry. But focusing also on our economic development, on our business development to Councilwoman Williams, point citywide and not just downtown, but Hermitage Avenue. We have a shopping center over there that is maybe 80% vacant right now, that's not helping the community. We have pockets all around the city facing the same type of dilemma. What are your immediate priorities when it comes to these things?
Well, I, I think Hermitage is an interesting thing to bring up. I know that probably two and a half years ago, the city attempted to buy that property. We had developers interested in that property and doing some affordable housing and actually doing mixed use with the lower part of where the drugstore is. And then you go up three or four stories with affordable housing and make it very easy for people who live there to walk to the pharmacy, get to the, you know, and get around with. So that was one thing that we were going to try to refocus on, on Hermitage and getting that going again. Obviously, we're Robling Two, we're jumping all over Robling Two again and seeing, trying to, trying to get that moving. Housing is the most interesting thing I, I find in the fact that if, if you do affordable housing, it really kind of, if we go and try to do rehab, it's very difficult because we've got to pay prevailing wage, we've got to pay professionals. We, we're really restricted in our ability to go in and do something with a piece of property. Again, the, one of the things that we're going to discuss later potentially is, you know, a avenue where we can expedite the process of eliminating the very slow auction process. And if I can get this process started with the rehabilitation zones, we can go in and we can work with the residents to rehab properties next year or turn over 10 or 12 properties that are not in redevelopment zones, but they can be established. It's really going to help the local little guy who wants to jump on housing and do something about it. It's going to be the greatest tool we have. And that's one of the first things, and it was recommended by legal counsel before. And I think it's, it's, we, once we get through Planning Board, I just think it's going to change the whole, our whole ability to do housing.
Yes, thank you. I'm glad that you made a point to say that because we because we definitely need to focus on home ownership. And a lot of people are inquiring about purchasing city-owned properties. As you can see, that our market is sky high right now, and interest rates are through the roof. But through city-owned property, they can find affordable ways. And that's what I mean specifically when I reference affordable housing, is purchasing city-owned property and accessing the resources for funding for redevelopment. And I have yet to see our city really do that and hold the hands of the residents and provide what that process looks like and how to navigate through that. So, I mean, I don't have a question to that point, but I just want you to keep that in mind, that a lot of people are inquiring about it, and we need accessibility to our housing.
And that's the best part about the direction I want to take with the rehab zones. That's part of the redevelopment agreement. And it's a minor redevelopment agreement that we do with these people, is the fact that you control as counsel, as a body, what that house has to be. So when we turn that house over to a purchaser, you can restrict that it's got to be home ownership for so many years, or you have that ability. That's where auctions, a lot of times you don't. With auctions, you're selling a property to someone from out of the area who doesn't care about the community, doesn't reinvest in community, doesn't substandard housing, puts people in at a very high rate. So I think this is going to give council a tool that you've never, ever had before.
Awesome. Thank you.
Councilman Harrison, then Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you. Arch, you brought up some locations, Roebling Block Two. We still have Mercer Hospital, the old St. Francis Hospital, Cook School. What do you see as moving forward? What do you project? Do you think that those opportunities are at those different locations?
I think the biggest thing is we've got to get developers that trust our ability to get things done. One of the problems we have here is that we're known for not having friendly processes. And I'm not going to get specific into departments, but if a developer can't get a project approved and can't get inspectors out and can't get the project done, it's costing him money. Time is money. It's all there is to it. And we've got to get more private investment in here. We've got to get people who are going to invest from outside and take a risk. And I think we have, and we already have that downtown. And we have private investment going on that people don't know about. And once we get that private investment going, and it's like a ball going downhill. And once it starts to roll, people see it thriving, then you're going to get the investment over and over again. But you've got to do something to show people.
Really quickly, we've had some discussions. So I just wanted to just kind of piggyback off of what Councilwoman Edwards says and just say something that I would like to see or suggest that we do promote more of the resources that are available for our residents to become homeowners and to take advantage of some of those resources that are out there. Because a lot of it is that they don't know what's out. And so I just wanted to say, I want to suggest that. I know you've been very responsive. You kind of touched on it a little bit as far as your plans for our next council meeting, what you want to present. I'm not sure if you're able to speak on that yet, but I'm looking forward to you putting more of our city-owned properties on the tax roll.
Me too.
Thanks.
So I just want to say, I'm excited for what's to come. You're already, you've hit the ground running, right? You've got us in, you've got the ball in motion, you have your ideas, you have the excitement that we need here, right? To get this thing going. I would also like to say that I had mentioned this before, if it's possible under former leadership, that I know Newark is doing something where they actually use like the Section Eight vouchers or certificates towards payments for homes. So if Trenton could do that, I would love if we could do something like that to be able to help those, you know, those people that get the vouchers and the certificates to actually, instead of paying some of these landlords, that they would actually use that towards their homes. That would be awesome if we could do a program like that as well.
Absolutely, I agree. And I think especially with Maria, MBA, she has a certain ability to really work through the channels and get things done. So I think the two of us working together, I think these are certain things that we can pull off with the state and with HMFA because of the relationships that she has and I've had over the years. I think it's a
Nice.
It's a good team. It's a good team.
Thank you. We're excited to have you back and looking forward to what's to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now, counsel, now that we've done all of that, now, when 90 days comes, we're going straight to the vote.
Oh, no, 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 no.
We're going straight to the vote. All right. Mr. Garcia?
Certainly, Madam President. At this time, as I understand it, it's your will to visit Resolution 24-242. This is a resolution providing advice and consent to the mayor's appointment of Corey McNair, landlord, regular member to the rent stabilization board for the term of 7/1, 2024 to 12/31/2026.
Yes, thank you. If Mr. McNair could come forward and address the council, we would appreciate it very much.
Good evening.
And thank you for your patience. I know you have to go. That's why we moved you on the agenda to get you before us tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
So if you'd like to say anything to the council about why you want to be on the board, and then if anyone has any limited questions that we would like to ask Mr. McNair so we can move into executive session, I would appreciate it. But I'm confident that you'll give us enough when you talk that we may be able to get through it. Mr. McNair?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Good evening, Council President and all members of council. Thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight. As mentioned, I am an employee of the city, a civil servant, also a resident, lifelong resident of Trenton. And I own six properties here in the city, 13 units. I'm interested in serving on the board because I feel that representation is very important. For example, I have one of my tenants, they're elderly, 70 plus, and I'm charging them $600 less than a neighbor on the street. They're paying nearly, as I said, $600 more a month right across the street. So for me, it's not about what you are getting a month in terms of income, it's about quality of life. It's about quality for the seniors to be able to also pay their other bills and be comfortable. And I think that is important that we hold folks accountable who, you know, may not have that same interest in education as well for the tenants, knowing their rights when it comes to new leases, percentage of raising, you know, of rent annually and things of that nature.
Thank you. Any council members have any questions or comments for Mr. McNair?
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Williams.
Detective, my question is, being a landlord and actually having so many, and I'm sure you have different challenges, but if you could talk about some of the challenges you face as a landlord and maybe some things that we can do as a city to improve things for the landlords, who are good landlords such as yourself, but also for tenants?
Well, I've been, knock on wood, I've been blessed. I have great tenants. I think that, you know, it's just all, when things come to you, you have to deal with them. I'm a part of the group of landlords, obviously, in the city who, we have to deal with this lead issue. And I got an email coming back from vacation last month saying, you have to get in compliance. You have to get all of your properties inspected. Of course, that means I have to pay money. But more importantly, tenants who live in those properties who may not be able to afford to live in a brand-new development, I have to make sure they're healthy and safe as well. So literally, I got back and I just hit the ground running from vacation. And so far, out of those six properties, I have four that have been inspected so far. Because it's very important to me, you know, to make sure that my tenants are in good health and that they know that, you know, I appreciate them. So.
So I guess as far as, are there any challenges systemically then?
I think the challenge for me having to pay for all of those lead inspections immediately, but once again.
But I mean, even paperwork.
Right, right.
Complaints about paperwork's confusing.
To be honest.
The complaint system, people don't know about it, where it's very intimidating as a tenant.
Yeah. To be honest, I have to say, I have to give the city their flowers, especially in the inspections department. I have had no issues at all whenever, you know, I purchase a new property. The inspectors are great. They are professional. If there's any issues, you're able to, you know, there's various things you can do to be able to get extensions on getting things repaired. For me, I try and be proactive, so I don't really face many challenges. I would rather put money out in the beginning versus have a tenant call me at, you know, 2:00 AM telling me something needs to be fixed that I could have probably fixed months ago. So for me, something I like to do is go in and do like a, you know, a full renovation initially so that we don't have to deal with those, you know, small issues in the long run.
All right, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Thank you, Council President. So I just wanted to say, Mr. McNair, I want to thank you for your servant leadership. I've had the opportunity to work with you and see what you actually do in the community and how proactive you are. I'm sure that most anyone who is a tenant would love to have you as their landlord. So you set and you lead a really great example of what is needed here in the city. So I wanted to just say thank you for that. Thank you for being hands-on and thank you for your commitment and dedication. I think you would be a great asset to this board.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I just want to say, the person that I know as Corey McNair, I know that he's a fair person. And that's why I thought when we saw your name come forth, that this would be a great, great addition to this board. I know we're reactivating this board, so I think you would be a great person and a person with a lot of knowledge and who's fair. So I just want to say thank you for volunteering your time to be on this board. And I'm looking forward to us getting this rent stabilization board going. Thank you.
Any other council person?
Councilwoman?
Yes, Councilman Harrison.
Corey, many years I see you out there in the community, helping people out. Now you're buying houses, giving other people opportunities. You're what Trenton's all about. So thank you, and I know you're going to do a great job. This is what we like to say, you have a smile on your face, but you also believe in helping others in this community. So thank you for all you've done now and all you will do in the future, buddy.
Thank you, sir.
Any other council people? Okay, so Corey, I'd just like to say thank you for your continued and elevated service in the city of Trenton, for not leaving Trenton behind, for thinking of Trenton, and then investing in Trenton as well. From your nonprofit that you have, you've been blessing people a long time with the works that you have done. And you have worked tirelessly and selflessly to help people that need it most. And so for that, thank you. And then, like I said, thank you for investing in the city, but then also looking to help the people in the city, like not forgetting, not forgetting, right? But helping other people to just have an honest opportunity at a good quality of life. That is very commendable. Thank you. All right, thank you. Mr. Garcia?
Certainly, Madam President.
I'd like to.
Certainly. Go right ahead.
I just, I want us to vote on this now.
I was just about to ask if that was your wish.
Yes.
If so, would you like to ask for a motion to approve?
Yes, ma'am. A motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Noted. Roll call. Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro-Kettenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Congratulations.
Madam President, moving on with the agenda at this time, I believe we have an executive session for the purpose of contract negotiations. If you want to ask for a motion to go into executive session at this time?
Yes, before we ask for the motion, I just want to make an announcement to everyone. As we know, the agenda is subject to change to leadership discretion. Just so you know, anyone that is here for the towing ordinance, if you didn't see, well, you probably wouldn't see because they didn't send it out. That was pulled today by law, so the towing ordinance is not on the agenda for tonight. So if you were here for that, you'll see us in September for that. I don't want anybody waiting around needlessly because we're not discussing it tonight. Ma'am, a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Roll call. Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro-Kettenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving on to executive session. I don't believe we anticipate a vote coming out of executive session at this time?
No.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcia?
Certainly. Just a note to the council and to the public. Councilwoman Figueroa-Cattenberg, Vice President Figueroa-Cattenberg is now present via telephone.
Thank you.
And Madam President, I believe, I need, you need, want to ask for a motion to come out of executive session?
May I have a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa-Cattenberg. This is for a vote to come out of executive session. Thank you. Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, I believe at this time, we've reached a point of public comment. To the public, public comment is five, will be five.
Well, let's see how many people are on the roster.
Understood. At this point, let's see, we have, ooh, we have nine. Wait. Well.
How many? Did you turn?
It appears we have about 22.
So, just a quick question, everyone that signed the sign in or signed for public comment, was there anyone that just signed the sheet thinking it was just a sign in sheet rather than to speak?
We got one.
So we have one, we have two. Oh, you're gonna speak? No, no, okay. So just one person thought it was a sign in sheet? Okay.
Okay.
So that leaves us with 21 speakers tonight.
Yes.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to reduce public comment to three minutes per person so we can get through all of the speakers.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Noted. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa-Cattenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Public comment will be three minutes for each individual. You may address anything that you wish. Please come up when you do come up to the mic. Please state your name and address for the record. The first individual I have listed here is Deborah Priester.
Good evening. Could you please press the button to turn the mic on for you? Yes, ma'am.
Gotcha.
Thank you. And you can leave it on when you step away so the next person can come. Thank you.
My name is Deborah Priester. I live at 136 Garfield Avenue in Trenton, New Jersey. I had filled out applications to get a grant for my home to, I'm a senior citizen and a disabled citizen. And it's been like three years and I haven't heard anything.
So I'm not sure if you, Mr. Garcia, right, thank you.
Correct, but just so you know, ma'am, and to the rest of the public, when you do address whatever matter you wish, the council is not obligated to respond at this time.
Right.
Okay.
So you're invited to, if you can, once we get through everybody, if you stay to our civic comment, that's when council will speak out if someone's going to speak to what it is that you had, but out of respect for you and what you have going on, what, what kind of grant was it? What was it for?
It was a CB.
CDBG?
G, yes.
Okay. Okay. If you don't mind, Ms. Priest, 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 sir, if you could see the young man on the end right there near the clock and give him your phone number, then we'll have someone, I'm sure someone will want to reach out to you. If you could just give him your name and phone number, we would appreciate it. Thank you, ma'am.
Cards, too, there should be cards up there. Huh? Next individual for public comment at this time, Latonya Reed.
Good evening. My name is Latonya Reed. My address is 340 West State Street. I share the street with Foundation Academy. It's located 363 West State Street. During the school year, the congestion is extreme. And one of the problems is parents are pulling up in front of the school, walking their children across the street instead of the pickup drop off line. This caused so much congestion last December. My precious child was hit by a car in the crosswalk accompanied by the crossing guard. Trenton Police have not gone to the school to review the video. I have asked them multiple times. So has my car insurance adjuster. This is because of a lack of resources. We do not have police presence. We have one crossing guard that's managing West State Street, a hub into greater downtown, and left-hand traffic coming out of Rutgers Place, which they're not even supposed to do. And what's happening now is the parking is getting more restricted for the neighbors of the school, me. So I have to pay a meter to park outside of my own home or get a seventy-dollar ticket or drive out into all this congested traffic because of the timing of the street sweeper. And I appreciate you, Councilwoman Frisbee, for coming to the school, meeting with me and the executive leadership. But how, school's about to start on August nineteenth and I'm still petrified because when she hit my daughter, she hit the brake. But it's an intrusive thought when you think that she could have panicked and hit the gas and run over my daughter. My daughter's five-eight, she's tall like me, but her peers who were in her sixth grade class who ran up to me this tall might not have been able to sustain that, getting hit on their physical person by a car. I know change doesn't happen overnight. But again, I am petrified. So I'm here for the council and the, the, the community. I'm glad twenty-one people wanna talk tonight because you all are here. I want you to know, on this street, the children are in danger. And we're band-aiding these small parking enforcements instead of the greater problem. If you wanna get some revenue, you let the cops come ticket all these parents who are driving around the crossing guard and having their little babies jaywalk across the street. That's where you're gonna get some revenue. You give me a book, I'll get out there and ticket all of them. But the CEO is directing traffic in the morning. And that's what I wanted to come, and I, and I have to keep coming because, again, I'm asking my own community where I live and where my child lives. Please, please, anybody, everybody, whatever mobilization we can do, I just cannot stand the idea of a child getting hit by a car right there.
Thank you.
Ke- uh, Keon Jones?
Good evening, Council. It's good to see you. Um, I'm on here, I'm speaking on the behalf of firefighter, uh, Tayshaun Page, um, who was unfairly persuaded to resign from his position. I'm just gonna keep it, uh, short and simple. I, I wanna quote.
Sir, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Did you check out your address? I apologize.
Uh, one thirty, my mailing address, one thirty-two Pennington Avenue, also a Trent firefighter. And, um, I'm speaking on the behalf of Salvation and Social Justice.
Thank you.
Um, thirty-four Pennington Avenue too as well. All right.
Okay.
Um, but I'm speaking on the behalf of Tayshaun Page, who was persuaded to resign, uh, wrongfully. Um, I said a lot last council meeting, uh, so much so that it sparked an article to come out, um, alluding to the things that I said, but I'm not here to focus on that. The main focus, I wanna focus on is Tayshaun. I first met Tayshaun, um, I, I've always seen him around the neighborhood, but, uh, when I, the first conversation that we had was in front of eight oh first, uh, it's a liquor store that was on fire. And he had got the dogs out, he had actually called the fire department. He told me that he applied. And I was just so happy, you know, he was just excited and he was just talking to me about everything that, that he's been through and he wants to change his life and everything. I was just like, okay, cool, cool. So when I finally seen him in the academy, I was like, bro, that's honorable. You did everything that you said that you were gonna do. And I, I was just so happy for him, um. With the Trent Fire Department, we're not attacking, uh, personnel. That's not, we're attacking a system that is perverse, that doesn't, uh, permit the real Trentonians. When I say real Trentonians, I mean people who went through Trenton school systems. People who walked the streets in Trenton, people who survived Trenton. Tayshaun survived Trenton. I think it's a win. Uh, I'm gonna add some things. I think we need to have a meeting with the mayor, get him in front of the mayor to, you know, try to rectify the situation before it escalates further. You know, he has a lot of support in the room tonight. That's probably most of the supporters, most of the people that signed up to speak on his behalf. He was a criminal and he was the things that we're trying to paint him. He wouldn't have that support. So I, I just wanna do the right thing by him. I wanna stick by him. Uh, and let's, let's, let's see what we can try to do, even if he's not on the fire department. Let's see if the city can help him get some employment. I work with Salvation and Social Justice and, uh, the things that I do, uh, and how the way I show up, we can't post things on social media when you're talking about dealing with murders. We got, we live in a culture in Trenton where we wanna do this all the time and, you know, talk about what we do. But one of the things that are, are, that is common with death, with people gunshot victims, black males in particular, is the most murdered in the city. Got you. My time is up. But, uh, I'm here to support Tayshaun.
Tayshaun Page?
Good evening, Council. Uh, my name is Tayshaun Page. Uh, I live three fifty Reservoir Street. Um, I'm just here because I just want to know the support that I have from my city council in rectifying the situation. Um, I do want to meet with, with somebody, um, any way to resolve the situation. Um, I was born and raised in Trenton all my life, um. And it's like, the change is, is, it starts wi- within the ones from the city, not the ones out the city. Even, I'm not excluding the ones out the city, but it starts from the ones that live in the city. So, like, I know I come from a, a, a rough neighborhood or, or I, I might be in a neighborhood chilling with friends, but that, that doesn't define who I am or who I'm gonna become. You, people don't know, I can be an advocate for those ones that are on that corner. Or it could be a homeless guy one day that, that's, that's starving on, on that same neighborhood that I'm from and I'm making sure he eat. Or, or it, just people that are struggling in general, my friends, like, about the things that they go through in life and I'm giving them hope and I'm telling them like, listen, this is not it. I'm a, I, I could be a, I'm a hood therapist, if you wanna be technical. I'm, I'm a neighborhood therapist. If you, I'm, I don't, I'm not out there doing anything illegal. I, I go to different parts of town and, and I, I give hope to where the hope is needed. So I just feel like I deserve a fair chance, just as well as everybody else. I did everything I was supposed to do. Uh, I woke up every day, I did. I just, I just want my chance. How, how you expect me to change if you don't give me change? Or, or you throw me back into the environment where I came from? I, I just want different and I deserve a chance. And that's all I'm asking for. And like, they, that's it. That's all I want is a chance. Like, I'm, I just wanna know what can we do to rectify this situation and me getting my chance? And I feel like I shouldn't have to do it over 'cause I did it already. I did everything I was supposed to do. I shouldn't have to do it over. Or, or, uh, whatever, whatever, wh- wh- just whatever is being rumored about me, whatever, that's, that, that, it, the two is facts is proven. I feel like I deserve my chance. That's it. I don't got much to say, but that's all I have to say for now, like.
Tanisha Page?
Hi. I'm Tayshaun's mother. Um, I'm sorry, y'all, it is heartbreaking. You know, um, just to give you a little history on me and my son. He has a good mother that stays, stays on him. Make sure he's a leader and not a follower. I require that in my home. There's so many people that's looking up to my child right now, thinking like, dad, I could do this too, or I can try, or just the, just the motivation he's giving other people to, you know, like, that see themselves in him is just a blessing in itself. I raised a good boy. Can't nobody, like I said, the fire academy was acquainted with my son for a few months. I raised him and I know what type of child I raised. So it's, it's just like a slap in the face that they did this to him. And I'm just, I'm hurt. I'm trying not to speak from a hurt place, you know? But it's, it's hard, you know, just seeing a little bit of light come out of him. You know, just, like, I don't, like I told my son, it's okay to feel hurt. It's not okay to feel defeated. So you gotta fight. You gotta keep going. You gotta keep, like, don't let, take no for answer. And I told him, whatever he do, his mom is here. And I'm gonna make sure he gets through everything. But it's, 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 it was really unfair and I feel as though to let him go through, do the training, pass the test, and the day he get ready to go to his assignment, you tell him no. So it's like, you wanna protect a child from the environment that he live in, why throw him back in the environment? You understand? If he trying to make a change and trying to better himself, why smack him in the face and stop that? Is what I don't understand. I, I go, it's, I'm not eating barely, I'm not sleeping, like, um, this is really stressing me out. My son, I have lupus. My son takes care of his mother. He helps me take care of his sisters. You know, so it's like, this was something where if I did close my eyes the day or tomorrow, I knew my son was gonna be okay and my daughters is gonna be okay. And to have somebody take that from him is just the most crushing thing ever. I don't wanna give nobody a sad story. I'm not up here for nobody to feel sorry for me because I got the strength of a titan. So that's not what I'm asking. I'm just asking like my son asking, give him a chance to show you. You can't say a person can't change or not changing if you don't give him a chance to change. I don't want my son to die out here in the streets. I don't. He done had, a lot of his friends been killed next to him. I don't want that for him. So I just appreciate if y'all just take the time out to just listen and, you know, hopefully investigate the situation, how it's. Okay, thank you.
M- mm, forgive me. Mona Yancey?
Good evening, Council. Uh, my name is Mona Yancey and I represent Passage Theater, which is at two oh five East Front Street. I'll be very quick. Um, just quickly, we wanted to speak about our upcoming fortieth season. Um, I am the community giving manager, so part of my job is going out into the community um, and engaging with everyone in the communities of Trenton about the arts. I am very passionate about the arts for so many reasons. I have gone into the schools as a teaching artist and just seen how our kids flourish, um, when they are able to express themselves, whether it's through writing, acting, dancing, that sort of thing. Um, and so for our fortieth season, we begin with a play called Alma, which is written by a Guatemalan-American playwright Benjamin Benet. And it's very important to this upcoming election that's happening, which is dealing with immigration and a mother and daughter, um, parenting, when you're talking about hope and courage and family, um, as well. Also, on September fifth, we are in, uh, fighting a lot of city workers because we want a lot of them to come and engage with us. Many go to work and they just leave right at five o'clock, right? Um, but when you go to New York or Philadelphia, you have the people right after work, they are engaging. We would like to see that happen in Trenton. Um, and so save your money from getting on that train and going out to New York. Nothing wrong with New York, 'cause I've been out there as well. Uh, but there's, there's, there's great things happening here in the city as well when it comes to the arts. So we're asking for that support. Um, so on September fifth, at the Lobby Club, from four thirty to five thirty, that will be specifically for our city and state workers. And then at five thirty, we are giving out, uh, tickets to our special, um, ten-ten showing of the play Alma, um, just to engage more particularly with our Latino community as well. Thank you.
Austin Edwards?
Good evening, everyone. Aus- Austin Edwards, nine one six Bellevue Avenue. Um, you guys remind me, I gotta go to DMV, change my whole address, the whole move thing, gotta get that situated. But, um, coming up today, uh, I think it's just a bit of a joke, right? Sometimes I run into you guys, especially in these hallways, and every time it's just like, oh, what did we do wrong? Well, it's kinda like Sour Patch Kids, right? You know, sometimes I'm sour. Tonight, I'm actually sweet, right? And I specifically wanted to come up and talk about, uh, our support of twenty-one, three-one-two and three-one-three. Um, as I was sitting in the, uh, crowd earlier, I was doing some of the math of all the numbers in front of you all tonight. And what I counted was essentially close to over half a billion dollars that you guys are deciding on, uh, tonight. And I think that's amazing because also with, uh, Director Richardson, as she was saying, that she was bringing in tens of millions of dollars and going after the money and bringing in more money into the city, right? I was just like, wow, it is amazing that there's so much money coming into the city to be a benefit. Now, we're speaking here today because, and I brought that number up, because with half a billion dollars, these two resolutions essentially authorize literally two hundred thousand dollars, just a drop in the bucket. And that's important because, as you all know, as head of the Downtown Association, we are doing everything we can to support our downtown businesses. And these resolutions would do exactly that. Giving two hundred thousand dollars to, uh, not just local businesses and local, uh, property owners, but this money would directly go to local contractors who can help our businesses not only survive but thrive. And this is exactly what we need in our city. And so I'm asking for your support for three-one-two and three-one-three to help our downtown business, uh, Downtown Association, our downtown businesses, our local contractors, help our city thrive. Thank you all, and I hope, uh, to count on your support today.
Diego Maya?
Good evening, Council President. Good evening, Council. Diego Maya, two fourteen William Livingston Court, Princeton, New Jersey. Um, Trenton is my hometown. I started my business about twenty years ago in, uh, in this area, reaching out to the Latino community and making sure that, um, their businesses were communicating to the Latino community in Spanish. And that's why I'm here today. And I'm gonna share some, uh, information for you guys.
Sir.
Uh, we, um, my company has been broadcasting simultaneously the Board of Education meetings for the Violin School District and the Camden School District. And we've also, uh, broadcasted, um, the state of the city for Mayor Raz Barak. And, uh, a year ago, we did it also for the mayor here, um, Rui Guixorra. Spanish is the second most spoken language in the world, right after Chinese Mandarin. And, uh, the Latino community is, um, growing exponentially. And right now, at this moment, its GDP, if it's looked at a, as a, as a nation within the US, is the fifth largest economy. That is, that is a huge purchasing, uh, power and consumption power. And I feel that in this city where, uh, thirty-eight percent of the community is, uh, Hispanic, it is important for the communications of the city, specifically the council, to be, um, available in Spanish. And, uh, so I'm here to ask, uh, one of you to consider taking that flag and, uh, discussing it of how the impact of, of providing the council meetings uh, simultaneously in Spanish, how that could benefit, uh, the entire city. One of the, um, an update of, because it's not just coming, uh, to Trenton and doing business. of, uh, what we're doing is, um, on, on the nonprofit side, uh, we just took, um, almost fifty-five kids, uh, black and brown kids to, uh, uh, New York on, uh, Google Hackathon, uh, trying to support, uh, the Latino kids and the black kids, uh, along with another, um, nonprofit.
Vladimir Castillo.
Um, good evening. My name is Vladimir Castillo. I'm a lifetime resident of Trenton, New Jersey. I live at three ten Maple Avenue, Trenton, Jersey. Uh, greetings to the honorable members of the Trenton City Council, as well as the other members of the community in the audience. Uh, I'd like to preface this statement with, uh, something about Dr. King, uh, something he wrote. The unemployment rate of the nation as a whole is about four percent. Statistics from the Labor Department report that among minorities, it's about eight point four percent. But these people are people who still go to the labor market, who still go to employment agencies and places looking for jobs so they can be calculated. The statistics can be gotten because they are still somehow in the labor market. But there are thousands of minorities who have given up. They have lost hope. They have come to feel that life is a long and desolate corridor for them to go with no exit sign. And they no longer look for a job. They no longer feel like they're part of anything, which is quite unfortunate, if you ask me. These are people who would estimate that amongst the discouraged persons, uh, there's another ten percent. So essentially, let's say that if these calculations would be true in today's day and age, where they're pretty similar, the unemployment rate for minorities can be anywhere from ten to sixteen percent in urban areas, which you can see is a very big issue. Uh, this excerpt, uh, encapsulates the current situation in Trenton today. There are members of the community such myself and others who have taken matters into their own hands to begin corporations with the purpose of creating job opportunities. I'm speaking specifically also about twenty-four dash three twelve and twenty-four, uh, dash three thirteen. Uh, I assisted, uh, T-Mark Real Estate and Project Management and Planning for that project. And I am the general contractor who, if this is voted through, would be rewarded the opportunity to do the project at Trent Makes, which is, uh, twenty-four dash three thirteen. Uh, this project would also hire a bunch of local subcontractors, some of which such as, uh, Mr. Marquise Palmer, and assist us in furthering, developing our local economy. Uh, there's millions and millions of dollars given into all types of different entities in Trenton, New Jersey. You know, they're building a highway, uh, project right now on twenty-nine, which was like twenty-six million dollars. Um, this would be a, a small, small award to rectifying the systematic uh, and racial oppression that we've dealt with for over four hundred years because we'll finally be able to, I guess, how can we say, bridge the gap between, I guess, the private, public, and, you know, the members of the community. Uh, so thank you very much. Uh, you guys have any questions?
Thank you. Jose Francisco, is that Coyar? Thank you. Thank you.
Evening, councilmen and ladies. I'm here to support any grant money. I'm, I'm a business owner of, of unique engineers. I'm a software writer.
Sir, if you would, could you just state your name and address for the reference?
Forgive me. Jose Francisco Colazo.
Got it. An address, if you would?
Yeah, four, three, three, Lamberton.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
No problem. So I want to first say kudos to you guys. Um, this is my first time seeing this in action. I'm not from out here, uh, but I see Trenton as a gem. Good people and, you know, the youth. I would like to see more programs like YMCA's, things of that nature. But today I'm here for specifically grants to help, uh, building infrastructures, especially with, uh, Roland. I was fortunate to meet, uh, Roland as a, as a businessman, excellent man, along with Vlad and Pierre as well, so. That's all I want to say. Take care.
Alexander Ramos. Roland Pot. Roland Pot. Cute counselor.
Good evening, council. Roland Pot, one thirteen South Montgomery Street. Just want to thank you for considering resolution number twenty-four, three, thirteen, which will greatly benefit the business owners of, um, and their work environment at four thirty-nine South Broad Street. I serve as president of Trenton Makes Inc., which applied for the grant under the American Rescue Act of twenty twenty-one, which is a federal grant as administered by the City of Trenton. And I've lived here in Trenton since ninety-five, when I moved here after college. And I started my first business here in Trenton in nineteen ninety-nine. I have been living and working here for almost thirty years and I've raised two kids here. I want to thank, uh, Vladimir Castillo of Castle Consulting for his work on the grant application and the maintenance work that he's been doing at the property, as well as the other contractors that have worked on the building. And part of our mission is to support the development of local contractors. I want to also thank all the small business owners that have spoken in favor of this resolution. The money goes towards the maintenance and improvement of the property where over twenty-seven small businesses operate and provide services to the community. These range from fashion, insurance, fine art, music, not-for-profits, healthcare, printing, and more. I have a list of the businesses, um, in the building that I'm going to leave with the clerk for your review. Also, as an aside, um, seventy-eight percent, by my calculation, of these businesses are minority and women owned. Sixty-four and a half percent of these businesses are owned by Trenton residences, residents. This grant will help to offset the costs that will otherwise be paid by higher rents. It will help to keep the space affordable for these small businesses. And helping these small businesses to succeed is part of our mission. And sometimes I think I should do a better job at telling my story. Um, but the truth is that my story is the story of trying to be in service of these, these small businesses that you're, um, here, that you're here, uh, hearing from tonight. That's, that's my story. My story is their story. Small businesses suffered a lot across the board during COVID and several people at the building went out of business and were unable to continue. The building is a historic property over a hundred thirty years old. I was involved in the renovation in two thousand and one. The property pays approximately thirty-seven thousand dollars to the City of Trenton in property taxes every year. And that supports city services. Thank you.
Princess, is that Jenkins?
Good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Princess Jenkins and I live at four, five, five West St. I'm here actually to talk about, I was here last time and talked about, um, the rent stabilization in the city. And I see that the rent ordinance currently is up to date on the website, which I think is great. Um, currently where I'm at, I have a lot of, uh, seniors who are not, um, they're, currently the, the rent, uh, increases four percent in the city. However, the seniors and people with disabilities in my complex is, is two, is two percent. So they just received letters currently this week that stated that they were going to pay four percent. And I was letting them know that it's not. So I'm here to try to find out, because my complex is fairly big. So I've been the one kind of running around and making sure that residents know what it is, what the ordinance says. Because we received something that said it was seven point nine percent. I said, no, it's not. And I rectified that and sent that to the property manager. And yes, so there are some other fees that are being tacked on in our complex. And just so you guys know, this, um, company who owns the complex that we currently live in owned at least about five other properties within the city. So when we talk about properties that aren't being managed or people are not, um, having rent increase fairly, this is a culmination of this one company that's here doing that, at least one of, and it may be several. So I'm here to see whether or not, um, I know that, I don't know if sometimes when we take a look, because I see that it seems as if property management or the companies who are own, who own these properties are now, uh, trying to in self-interpret what the ordinance says. So having said that, um, just trying to find out how we can maybe put some restrictions on that, clarify. And also too, for our residents and people who have disabilities, really understanding that it is two percent and not the four percent because the notifications that are going out for them, that they're currently getting are for four percent and we know that's not. Um, so hopefully with the Rent Stabilization Committee, you know, we can get some of that adjusted. Um, but just trying to see, I know, you know, Councilwoman Frisbee has been helping out in our end in terms of letting us know what we can do, what some of the things that I have going to, um, the police department, some things that we can work with Community Affairs, getting something settled in. So I'm just trying to, especially with our seniors, because they're not the ones coming to the meetings, they can't get to the meetings, they have health issues and they don't understand this language, which, you know, I'm trying to help interpret for them so they are not treated unfairly. So having said that, just seeing if the council can maybe do more in terms of getting like that language out, what I'm happy to support that, um, and anything I can do on my end. Thank you.
Tammy Butler. Tammy Butler. I think it's Butler. Moving on to Jeremiah Brooks.
Good evening, City Council. Oh, sorry. Good evening, City Council. My name is Jermeja Brooks and, um, I serve as the program coordinator for Arm in Arm for the Parent Can Make Program, who help provide emergency services and outreach to homeless children. Um, I am a, been, I was born and raised in the city of Trenton. I am here today in full support of Taishan Page, who had faced, you know, different obstacles of his termination with, um, the Trenton Fire Department. Um, I've known Taishan my whole life. And, um, I just want to say like, growing up in Trenton, we are, you know, confronted with significant challenges such as violence, poverty, and many other different disadvantages. Um, these circumstances shape us in different ways. Some become a product of our environment. Um, some move away and seek better opportunities. And some, like Taishan and myself, choose to stay and give back to our community. Um, Taishan is a prime example of someone who has overcome the odds. Um, as a black man growing up here in Trenton and the United States in total, um, he has faced numerous life challenges, yet he has worked tirelessly, often with little sleep, remaining focused and dedicated to his mission of effectively becoming a firefighter for the City of Trenton. He has transformed himself and, and he has been committed and staying focused. Um, I know him personally, so I've seen how this has shaped him in a better way. And I just, I'm here in full support. I signed a petition to help, you know, his termination be at least reconsidered. As I said before, growing up in Trenton, as everybody know, is really challenging. And also when people leave the City of Trenton, sometimes they don't look back. So it's the, the fact that he, you know, applied himself to actually, you know, train and work hard to become a firefighter in the City of Trenton. I feel like his devotion should be taken into consideration. Um, because that, when you work for a city like Trenton, I feel like when you have someone who's giving back and someone who has, you know, support of the community, not only just personally, but professionally, because he is a great person. I feel like things, I don't know the, the word for it, but I feel like things like, um, stuff that, you know, you endure growing up here should be taken into consideration. And I feel like he, he, his termination was, you know, I don't know, like, the specifics, but from everything and the information that I've received, I feel like that he should be, his, um, I'm sorry. His commitment should be taken into consideration. And I feel like the problem that we have in our community today is that a lot of people that are from here don't want to get back here. They just want to move up in life and move away. So, yeah, thank you.
Uh, Deja Davis. Did I say that right?
Good evening, Council. Good evening, City Council. My name is Deja Davis. I reside at fifty-nine Oliver Avenue, Trenton, New Jersey. I'm here on behalf of Taishan Page. Um, we grew up in the same city where, as Jermeja was saying, we faced a lot of, you know, disadvantages with poverty and crim, you know, a lot of criminals going around. I don't think that this should have been taken away from him, being that he went through a lot of extensive training physically and mentally and still fought through. And then they took it away from him. And then he's still here fighting. It's not like he gave up and said, hey, this is what they're saying. Let me just go to the streets. Let me just sell drugs. Let me just do this. Let me just start killing. It's unfair. And we have a lot of young men who are looking up to men like this. We have the firefighter boys who come through to let us know that the firefighters are coming through. We have these same young men who are looking up to them because they want to be this. And to see someone fight hard to get out, we were dealt a lot of cards that were unfair. A lot of times we're stuck in the position that we're in because of the simple fact that this is where we were born at. And like they said, people grow up and they leave and they leave because it's so much trauma here, it's so hurt here. This is a time for you guys to, you know, stand up for us and say, hey, like, he's trying. Let's give him a chance. Growing up in Trenton Public Schools, I've learned that it only takes one person to advocate for you, one person to push for you, one person to choose you, for you to turn around and give that same consideration to the next person and give that same, um, I can't think of the word for it, but like, you know, up, upheld them into a better position so that they don't want to go that route. We have a lot of crime going on here and whether it's car accidents, car stealings, killing and stuff, like, this is our chance. So I hope that you guys give him the same chance and see that he's fighting for it because it was very unfair. Thank you.
Nalito Valentin. Okay. Tashira Page.
Good evening, City Council. Um, I'm Tashira Page and I reside at eight fifty-nine Hamilton Avenue. Um, I'm actually also here on the behalf of Tashon Page. She actually is my brother. Um, and I stand here before you with a heavy heart burden by the injustice that has been falling with one of our own, somebody who also resides in our community. Um, this is not just a loss for us, but this is a loss for our community to see a black man who was raised in the environment of Trenton and to be able to not fall into the environment to want something better for themselves. I think it was eye awakening for me as well because being a black man in this environment is really hard. Either you are thrown in jail or you don't happen to see a next day because you die or something like that. And to be able to see him be disciplined enough to wake up at five AM, to go through this program for months and to be let off by the last day. I think it was heartbreaking, again, not just for me, but for our community because he does a lot for the youth. And in my opinion, um, a lot of men in this community falls short because they have no support. So when you do not have support, that's when they fall to other things like drugs or the streets or gangs. And I believe that some type of a cannabis. And I believe that some type of accountability needs to be taken here, whether if it was his background or anything. Um, the community was able to come together. His petition has over 2,000, um, signs on it. And I think that that needs some type of recon, recognition, whether it's from you guys or from you guys higher up. But to see the community come together for a purpose like this, I think that it's eye awakening and that we should really bring some attention to it. And I think that, again, some accountability definitely needs to be taken here. Um, if it was his background, then why would you wait five months to sit there on the last day? After you've seen me pass these tests, after you've seen me go through the hardships of actually a challenge, challenging these things, you fire me on the last day. And it's heartbreaking and I really hope that we have you guys' full support or even some type of information that could be higher up from you guys. And yeah, thank you.
Van Brown?
Praise the Lord. Good evening, Madam President. Good evening, City Council. I just wanted to say thank you to this board, to this body of government for the great work you guys are doing. You're doing a tremendous job for the city and you're working collectively together, the various agencies of the city. You can see it all around the city. It's so exciting to be here in Trenton, seeing government affecting the area and the out, uh, outcome of what we all are believing for. And that is a great Trenton. This is the capital city of New Jersey. As I've said before, I'll always remind us of that, that this is the capital city of the entire state. This place has to be beautified. This place has to be the representation of the entire state, the state of New Jersey. This is where the seat of government happens, right here, where we live. This is our city, the shining gem of all of New Jersey. And I believe that and we're working hard to see it. And the board and, and of course, the council and all members, this law department, everybody associated with this city are working together and, and change is very, uh, seeable to those who have eyes to see. And I pray that we all do. But I also want to close with, I pray that everybody come to know who Jesus Christ is as their own personal Lord and Savior. Thank you very much. God bless everybody. Thank you.
Alberto Lugo?
Good evening, Council. My name is Alberto Lugo. My address is 1560 East State Street. I'm here on the behalf of, address 439 South Broad Street, also for Mr. Potts. I would just like to say I'm one of the businesses that have flourished. There was two times where COVID and another thing where I was struggling. He not only saw to give me grace, he's a great landlord and I wouldn't be where I'm at today. I'd just like to thank him publicly and I hope you guys support him in getting this grant. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Right, Madam President, that is all the individuals I have for public comment at this time. If it's your wish, you can move to civic comment.
Yes, we will move to civic comment. I'll do, I will make the same request that I had before when we limited public comment. I just asked council if you can, we go to three minutes, but don't go past five. All right? So for those that can limit it at three, please do. For those that need five, then that's fine as well. All right. Let's begin with Councilwoman Edwards. She's kicking it down to Councilwoman Williams. So Councilwoman-
Then she yells at me about questions.
Oh, we're good. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. So I just have a couple of quick announcements and something to say. So I just want to remind everyone that this coming Tuesday night is National Night Out here in Trenton and around the country. And so there's a very large celebration at Al Water Park, at West Avon Parkside, of course, from 5:00 to 9:00 PM. And there will be also National Night Out locations throughout the city, uh, in each of the wards. So please try to be a part of this and it is a great way to meet other members of our community, talk about quality of life issues, crime issues, connect, reconnect, particularly now a couple of years after COVID, it's so important. But all the positive things people, you know, talked about trying to fix the city and make the city better, it really, in my mind, starts with events such as this. Uh, also want to make an announcement about North Ward Assistant Police Advisory Council meeting. The next one is actually going to be at the end of the month. Usually it's the third Wednesday day of the month, but this time it'll be, uh, August 28th, Wednesday, at Galley Baptist Church, 440 Martin Luther King Boulevard, from 5:30 to 7:00. It's a great opportunity to have a conversation with other residents of the North Ward, uh, some business owners, and also talk with our police department, with Detective McNair, who you saw earlier, and the police director, if he's available, about issues going on in our North Ward. Finally, I just want to just say a little something. So recently, um, I had, there was an event I hosted. And one of the great things that came out of it was a discussion led by a college professor regarding how to work together in a nonpartisan fashion, a bipartisan fashion, and work with a combined mission, a shared mission, particularly when it comes to Trenton, making Trenton better. And what was really great is we had different folks from different parts of political spectrum, some folks from Trenton, some folks not from Trenton. And what was really phenomenal to see was the love that everyone had for Trenton and wanting to see it be better, wanting to see it hold its rightful place in our county, in our state, in our country. And it just kind of, you know, gotten me watching, you know, when I was watching the Olympics, just, you know, it's, it's kind of, you know, a funny thing to watch, but if you've been watching the Olympics, you've seen Snoop Dogg around a lot, wearing his USA gear. Every night there seems to be something different. But seeing somebody have such pride in our country and rooting for the US, no matter what the sport is, who the player is, it's, I think, it's a great message. We're all in this together. And, you know, it just reminds when I'd, I'd see things on, you know, and hear things that downgrade Trenton and pull Trenton down. That reminds me when I hear fellow Americans root against American athletes because they kneel during the National Anthem or they don't like their politics or they don't like that they talk too much or whatever it might be. But we all have to root for each other. We all have to root for something better. And, um, we all need to be able to have lives and also share relationships and have people that we've connected with. I've known, um, Mr. Pott, I'll just say right now, for close to 30 years. That's a long time. I've known him where we partnered on, uh, creating a Hurricane Katrina fundraiser to raise money to send to victims in New Orleans, to starting the Trenton Film Festival 20 years ago this year. To, he, uh, ended up coaching my, my son in track, which was a great thing, because I certainly could not have done that. And it's interesting when you have folks who are so ingrained in our community come before you at council. So when we had our event, it was a really lovely event, great conversations were had, uh, really positive feelings. One of the things that occurred for me was, uh, Mr. Pott is a supporter of mine. And one of the things I did not know was that this issue for the resolution for ARP money would be on our docket the next day. So with that, um, and the respect I have for this institution of City Council, for the respect I have for the city of Trenton, I root for the city of Trenton, I root for my fellow council members, and I root for the small businesses that are struggling to make it here. But that being all said, um, I do feel it's best that I abstain tonight from this vote. But we know who we know. We, we are who we are and we live in a city that we live in. And let's all make Trenton the best it could be and let's root for Trenton and let's root for USA. God bless and have a lovely week. Thank you.
Councilman Harrison?
First, I would like to thank the new directors. I know they're going to do a wonderful job for this great city. They all have passion and determination to see the city move forward. Also, I want to tell all the people over in East Ward, August the 17th, we're doing the citywide cleanup. Cleanup consists of yard waste, furniture removal, no construction debris, no chemicals, no televisions, no electronics. But like I said, it's, it's another event we're first in the city to help clean up our city. So it's another one of the events that we all should try to do our best to help out the community. Also, August the 7th, the CYO, their parking lot, they're having an event there, Take It To The Street. It's going to be a wonderful event over there on CYO, on East State Street. Let's see what else. Uh, Movie Under The Stars, August 22nd, Villa Park. They're going to be having, it's on Lindell and Centennial Ave. They'll be playing Kung Fu Panda 4. Showtime starts at dusk. Let's see what else. That seems to be it. Yeah. It's all about us working together and let's move together forward and, uh, let's, let's keep doing the work. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, everyone, for being present today. I want to say, um, thank you to the mayor for, um, appointing some of the individuals who have been working here for a long time. And I'm looking forward to seeing our city progress with them in those positions. Just a couple of comments. First, I want to say to Ms. Reed, I, I think she left already, but I just wanted to apologize for her to have to go through what she went through with her child being hit due to the traffic. I know going, traveling back and forth on West State, it, it is very, very congested in that area. So hopefully we can try to speak, talk to, you know, have some discussion and figure out some solutions for that area. Want to say thank you to everyone who came out and showed your support for Taishan. As I said before, I have known this young man from a young, young age and so as, as one of my previous students. So thank you to everyone who came out and spoke up for that. To Diego Maya, thank you for bringing this to our attention and for what you have been doing, um, translating. As you all know, I've been very passionate about trying to get this translation ordinance going. And we're one step closer to making it happen. And these are some of the things that we talked about for the future of translation. We want to start out in a different, with phase one and kind of phase other things in. So thank you for bringing that to our attention because it is extremely important. I know we say Latinos are only 38%, according to the census, but we all know that it's a lot more than that. Because according to our school records, it's almost 60, actually 62, but. I just also wanted to, um, speak about the rent ordinance that was changed. Thank you for getting the website updated. I've been really hounding them about that because there's been several landlords who have been trying to raise the rent to 7.9% because I believe they know that this ordinance has been changed, but the residents do not know. And so they have been trying to get their letters out before, um, everyone is aware of it. But I can say, we, we must do a better job at letting the residents know. I know for me, at some of my community meetings, I have actually just printed the papers out and have been sharing. I'll make sure to get some, you know, get around to your building to actually speak to the residents if I need to do so. Because that was something that we worked really hard to champion and I, I hate to see our residents being taken advantage of. So thank you for bringing that to our attention and educating those seniors who didn't know about that. So the Trenton Housing Authority, I just want to shout them out because although we were shooting for $50 million, uh, $50 million grant, we ended up getting 15 million, but they worked really, really hard. And I want to say the 15 million still will go to transforming our Donnelly Homes and that whole, um, North Trent area, it may not be what we thought it was going to be from one end to the other, but it would, it's some, it's a start that we're going to start to, uh, make sure that our people have a, a better living space in the North Ward. Also want to shout out to 929 Moxie Goin' Trenton Radio. It's our Latin radio station for being number one in all areas in the recent, uh, coming, in the last couple of months. I just want to shout them out really quickly because they've been doing a lot in our community also. Shout out the Salvation of Social Justice for their Week of Shalom, which was a success. We had a great time with all of the events. And then also some upcoming events, it's the Puerto Rican Community and Friends. They started their week-long activities. We did our flag raising on Monday. And then we're going to finish off with the Fiesta Patronales, which is Sunday. And that's a festival that we, it started out in Puerto Rico, which is always a great time. And they're bringing it here to us on Sunday, um, at St. Mary's Cathedral. And that is from 12 to 4, 12 to 6, I believe. Also, same shameless plug, this is my ninth year doing a bookbag giveaway. I will be hosting my ninth annual bookbag giveaway in honor of my father, which will be held at the Juan Martinez Memorial Park on Lamberton Street on August 20th. The first 200 students will receive food, uh, bookbags, food, free supplies, everything. So I just want to say thank you to who have donated. Anyone wants to donate, you're more than welcome to come out, volunteer your time and assist us in that, on that day. Thank you all for being present and continue to come up here, continue to share your concerns so that we can all, um, be aware of what's going on. Thank you.
Before we move on, Councilman Harrison has something he wanted to say real quick.
Sorry about that. I forgot. Um, today's Jose Quebrera's birthday. Jose's the one that does the park, uh, in Unity Square Park. Started out 20 kids, now has 430 kids. Thank you, Jose, for all you do with the young men and women in that park. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Frisbee?
Thank you, Council President. So good evening, everyone, and thank you to everyone who came out this evening to speak. We appreciate you coming out. This is what it's all about, is hearing from you and hearing the voices. Please know that we hear each and every one of you. We can't speak on everything. There are legal parameters and so we have to be mindful of that. I want to, uh, some of this has already been mentioned, but I first want to congratulate all of those who have been appointed to new positions here in our city. I am grateful, I'm excited to work with each and every one of you and to see the growth of our city as we continue to utilize those who we have inside our, in our, um, city already, to see the wealth that we already have here and know that we should be building upon that. Um, I want to remind everyone that this Tuesday, August 6th, is National Night Out. And we, once again, will be celebrating it in my ward at Cat Walter Park. There, if you want to, um, have a table, I'm not sure if you're still able to, but you need to let the, uh, department, and I think you need to let the police, there's someone in the police department. Let me know, let us know that you want to get a table and one of us will help you get it. I, in particular, am raising my hand because I know that, I, I know the individual who was supposed to. She's not here this evening, so I don't want to put her name out there, but I will help get, facilitate that. Also, on this Monday, August the 5th, I will be having my West Ward Community Conversations, still at the Old Fleet Station at 660 Artisan Street. Most of the people, most everyone in lodges is Hermitage Avenue, but the address is actually 660. And that's from 5:30 to 7:30 PM. Also, uh, I wanted to say that I'm excited about the growth of our community. We're having a lot, there is a lot of growth going on, a lot of positive energy that's going on. I'm excited about the small businesses that are growing. I'm, I'm happy to see that there's a lot of home ownership that is coming into our community. Our city is moving forward and that's because we're working hand in hand. So I wanted to thank everybody for just doing, um, that. Also, I've been organizing, um, and I want to thank Ms. Ruth for her help in this, um, trips to the Mercer County Airport. With our new executive, uh, new county exec, um, it's been important to him for us to understand what actually goes on, what we have available and what is about to come. So if you have a group, small group or large group, let's, let me know and I will help facilitate that with getting you to have a trip out to the Mercer County Airport. There's a lot of change that is about to happen out there and if we are not informed, it is our own fault. You have the opportunity to actually go out there and they will engage. They want you to know what's going on out there. I want to commend our Latino community for all the activities that they have been doing. And our Councilwoman Gonzalez, she has been instrumental in a lot of that and keeping us aware of that. So thank you for that. I appreciate you. Salvation and Social Justice, your Week of Shalom was absolutely phenomenal. They did a fantastic job. I want to thank them for their passion in their hearts with that. And Diego, I want to thank you as well for bringing the issue up of having things interpreted. It's important that we make sure that the languages, especially since we know that our Latino community is an extremely large portion of our Trenton community. We have to make sure that we give, we give room for everybody to be understood and heard and be informed. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. And I do want to thank our Councilwoman Gonzalez, once again, for all of her hard work that she's put into making sure that we get everything interpreted. Last thing with, along with National Night Out, we are, and a lot of folks are doing their bookbag drives. We, there is an organization called Turning Point, 143 South Broad Street. They want to help you actually put books in your bookbags. So on National Night Out, actually during National Day, if you would like books, majority of them are brand new, we would love for you to come out. We're partnering with Classic Book as well. You can come and get books at 11 a.m., 143 South Broad Street. Please come put books to put in your bookbags. With that, I will close with recognizing that the people of Trenton have made us guardians of the public trust. We are committed to govern with integrity and fiscal responsibility to seek excellence in the city's operations and to serve all of the city's people with respect and compassion. I wish you all a safe evening and thank you for coming out.
Before I move to Councilwoman Edwards, Councilwoman Williams, quickly with your North Ward cleanup.
Thank you very much, ma'am. I neglected to say that actually next Saturday, September, August 10th, rather, we will be having the North Ward after the South Ward does its cleanup. And all my residents in the North Ward, please, let's make sure that this year we don't come in second for the amount of tonnage of debris. Director Ana Terry has put out the call and we will hopefully answer. But thank you so much, Council President.
Before we move on, Councilwoman Frisbee.
Thank you, Madam President. Falling right in line with that, the West Ward cleanup will be on August 24th. So you can contact me, let me know, I'll let you know. Especially if you come out to our West Ward Community Conversations on this Monday. But our West Ward cleanup will be on August the 24th. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And just so you all know, since we only meet like once a month now in August, we got to get all this out now so you know what's going on. Councilwoman Edwards.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure seeing you all. And I want to thank all of those, especially those who is your first time here tonight speaking at this podium. I know how intimidating that is as I was in my 20s when I first spoke at this podium. So I understand the nervousness, but I appreciate you taking the time to come out and sharing your thoughts and your concerns with us. Moving on, I want to thank the mayor and his cabinet for pivoting as they need to. I know there's a lot of unforeseen circumstances no one could foretell happening. So I appreciate the ability to be able to pivot to fulfill these roles while we're suffering from staff shortages. And on that note, and first of all, congratulations to all of you interim directors. Looking forward to working with you in the very near future. But to that point, I want to raise the need to focus on retainment by succession planning. I appreciate that Mr. Paul Harris was elevated to the interim director for Parks and Recreation. And that's through his experiences, through his longevity here in the administration. And I want, we need the administration and future administrations to focus on getting into these high schools and local colleges to focus on getting Trentonians qualified for these positions. So when people are moving on, retiring or seeking employment elsewhere, advancing in their careers, we're able to move up internally. But we can only do that when we get people in the door to begin with. So we need to focus on getting people qualified, whether that be through on-the-job trainings and certifications and things like that. And that will help us get around our residency requirement that often limits us from being able to find the talent that we need here. Secondly, or thirdly, I want to shamelessly plug in the Young Professionals Network that I founded a little over a year ago. We are having a Pathways to Home Ownership Workshop at Mercer County Community College downtown on August 10th, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. This workshop includes a prelude panel discussion into a three-session breakout where we're going to be discussing with experts in their subject matter areas about getting qualified to purchase a house, understanding mortgages, and what to expect when you hit the housing market and how to access resources from the different levels of government, whether that be city, county, or state, to access the funding that you need to either redevelop the property or to get cash assistance with down payments and closing costs. And lastly, I just want to thank the Mercer County Executive, Dan Benson, on his efforts with revitalizing and redeveloping the Trenton Mercer Airport and for inviting the Young Professionals Network out a couple of weeks ago to do a tour and talk about the redevelopment plans there. And also for his updates and the mayor's, Mayor Goseioras as well, at the recent Princeton Mercer Chamber of Commerce Trenton redevelopment, Trenton Economic Development Series that they just kicked off at Cooper's. This gave updates about their plans from the county and the city on our infrastructure redevelopment projects that includes Mercer County Community College, campus expansion, and also resources available to small businesses, local entrepreneurs, to help develop their businesses and prayerfully get into a brick and mortar. And that's all-inclusive of the plan that they have stretching down from where their building is at 640 South Broad Street, all the way to the Battle Monument, coinciding with the Trenton 250 Master Plan that we have here with the city that we're trying to bring to life. So, okay, so I had some time. So I also want to end on, we do have a citywide cleanup this Saturday, August 3rd, in the South Ward. And this is for yard waste and furniture removal. There is no construction debris being accepted, no home renovation debris, no chemicals, no TVs and electronic devices, and no wood or branches over four feet long. So just keep in mind as you are cleaning out your yard or your house that there are some items that are not being deceptive as a part of this cleanup. And also keep in mind that the South Ward, though we call it South Trenton, part of down bottom is not South Ward. It actually cuts in half, it's actually North Ward. So where I live at on Ferry Street is actually North Ward. We call it South Trenton. So if you're past, what is that like? I don't even know. Taco Bell on South Broad Street, you're in the North Ward going towards downtown. But that's like where the line is. So keep in mind as you live in South Trenton, you may not be in South Trenton. Thank you.
Council Vice President Figueroa Katzenberg.
Guys can hear me. I wasn't able to hear a lot of the public comments. I apologize for having to step away. I felt under the weather. My colleagues, you guys pretty much covered everything this evening. Thank you for that. Yes, the South Ward cleanup is this Saturday. Please put your trash out as you normally would in the location that you normally would for your regular Tuesday and Friday cleanups. Please just be mindful moving forward to put your trash out, you know, Monday nights or Tuesday mornings and Thursday night and Friday mornings in the South Ward. And if your trash doesn't get picked up, contact the city or move it back. Don't leave it out sitting. I got to tour around the city, try to run South Ward on Monday with the Assistant Director of Public Works and got to show him a lot of the streets, a lot of the trash being put out too soon. The plural condition there are alleyways and the like. I want to thank the administration, I want to thank Parks and Rec and Public Works for all the work that they've been doing in the South Ward. They've cleaned up so many alleyways and streets. It's just been phenomenal. And so many of the residents are taking notice. And I really hope that this will increase a sense of self-care for the neighborhood and will boost morale and bring forward quality of life that we deserve in the city of Trenton. And, you know, particularly to my ward. And I just want to thank the administration again for doing this. They are cleaning up streets and alleyways in all of the wards leading up to all the cleanups that we have coming forward. So I just want to say I'm just really proud of how the city is moving. I'm proud of how our council and our administration are moving. And I'm really proud of how the residents are continuing to come out and staying engaged and staying on top of us and keeping us accountable. So with that, I will give the rest of my time to my colleagues. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you for staying around and being present with us. Thank you for coming out and speaking up about whatever it is that you had on your mind and your thoughts and your hearts to say to us on tonight. Know that your words just do not fall on deaf ears. We take everything in. There are a lot of things, as Councilwoman Frisbee said, that we cannot respond to due to legal issues or just situations, things that are going on, right? We are the council. We have the checks and balances to the administration. But at the end of the day, the administration is the administration. I'm gonna leave that. I would like to say congratulations to the interim directors. We've said it in the beginning when we heard what you had to say, what you brought forward. We're excited for what it is that you have coming for the city of Trenton. So me being an island resident, right? I'm over there on the island in West Trenton. I am so elated because finally, y'all, we can see the water. We can see the water, as long as it don't raise up and come in the house, that'd be even better. But we can see the water. And that is due to the tremendous efforts of the mayor and his administration. We did a walk-around tour. We were pointing and looking and we want this done and we want that done. And that was one of the big things that we needed done. And so under the former leadership of our now interim business administrator, Maria Richardson, and now under the current leadership of our interim director, Paul Harris, the trees are gone. The trees that were covering the water are gone. It is absolutely magnificent. What does that mean? That means that we're moving and they're listening and they're working to help make things happen. The city is moving all over the place. If you look, you're seeing the cleanups that are happening. You're seeing the parks that are being done. Some people are like, why would you do that? Because we want to bring back hope and show the people that Trenton is the place to be. We are the capital city and we care and we want people to understand. And we want the children to play. And we want people to have things that you can visually see and touch to know that we are working. So I'm excited about that, right? Praise the Lord. So. So I had a great meeting with Michelle Madu. She is the Director of Mental Health Services for the County of Mercer. For those of you that would like to help out with trauma response, the Mercer County Traumatic Loss Coalition Trauma Response Team is looking for people to come out and help meet with youth caregivers and others affected by critical incidents with community-wide impact. They want to grow the team. You can be a trauma response team member if you're willing to provide psychological first aid in community and school settings, willing to commit to ongoing training and join follow-up team meetings, willing to complete the basic 40-hour training and any ongoing training and are at least 18 years old. If that is you, you can contact the Mercer County Division of Mental Health at 609-989-6529. With that being said, my nonprofit, the Gianna Monae Genesis Foundation, my daughter, the co-founder, she's stepping out and she's having a look behind closed doors, look behind the walls of a domestic violence survivor. She has gotten with the young lady, Tori Burks, who works through Women's Space. And on this upcoming Wednesday, from 5 to 7, right here in the atrium of City Hall, they're having a look behind closed doors. This is for men and women to come out. You go through seven stages or seven different stations of what a person would experience. And then when it's done, it culminates with a real, live dialogue about mental health, about domestic violence and preventative measures. So that is open, that is absolutely free. If you want more information, you said my number? The phone number from before? Child, okay, give me a minute. So if you're interested, if you're interested in coming out, we invite you to come out on Wednesday. On Saturday, Beauty to the Block is back. Pastor Antonio, his wife Diane Bellamy, they're doing Beauty to the Block on North Broad Street out here. And it's going to be from 9 to 1:30. So come out. They're doing free haircuts. They're going to have different vendors and everybody out there giving away different items and stuff to get people ready for school. I think that's everything that I wanted to say. Again, I'm just excited. Thank you to my colleagues. Like, we've really been having some really wonderful, everybody else went over Brandon, so leave me alone. We've had some really wonderful dialogues and conversations and intentional conversations about the direction in which we'd love to see the city go and talking about how we would work collectively to make it happen. And so I just want to say that I am elated for the work that we're doing. I'm excited for the work that we're going to continue to do together. And I'm excited for what's to come in the city of Trenton. Thank you. So before we move on, Councilwoman Frisbee does have something else that she wanted to say about National Night Out.
I'm sorry, it was asked, I was trying to tell you earlier where you can go to. If you're interested in having a table for National Night Out, you can go to communityaffairs@trentonpolice.net. That's community affairs, C-O-M-M-U-N-I-T affairs, A-F-F-A-I-R-S, at trentonpolice.net. Thank you.
Mr. Garcia.
Certainly. Okay, moving forward, Madam President. Moving forward with the docket, we have minutes for approval from April 18th, May 7th, June 6th, and June 20th. Do you want to ask for a motion to approve the minutes?
May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa Katzenberg. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve communications petitions and reports.
Yes, may I have a motion to approve the communications petitions and reports?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa Katzenberg. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams. Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. And moving through into ordinances for second reading and public hearing, we have ordinance 24-041, an ordinance of the city of Trenton to adopt NJDEP's model ordinance regarding stormwater control and to amend Chapter 254 of the Code of the City of Trenton. Are there any members of the?
Sorry.
Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa Katzenberg. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 24-045, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property, commonly known as 217 Bruning Avenue, Bruning Avenue, and identified on the city tax map, block 22801, Lot 9, pursuant to NJSA 40A 1213B5, to Nilsa Reyes for the sale price of $4,000. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Council President.
Yes.
I have a question regarding this property.
Okay. Go ahead.
Would that be for Mr. Beach or who is that for? I could just ask the question so I could jump out.
Mr. Beach is gonna come on down. The Price is Right.
Good evening, Council. Jim Beach, Chief of Staff.
Thank you, Mr. Beach. Thank you, Mr. Beach. I have a question, because I know this property well on Brunig. And the intended use in the application says to be used for a driveway. So that would require the property to be torn down and a driveway created. But also, lot-wise, that would be a separate lot only used for a driveway attached to the property, I'm assuming, where Ms. Reyes lives.
That's what she indicated in her application.
Yes, okay. So I just wanted to make sure, you know, that when we sell properties, they're not always intended to be redeveloped into houses. Because even though there's a standing house there right now.
Correct.
Okay, because we don't have any legal recourse to require them to maintain a residence or domicile.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia.
Certainly. We have a motion, and we have a second. I believe we're at roll call.
Okay.
Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettner. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 24-048, capital ordinance appropriating $10,651,800 from the Capital Improvement Fund to pay for various improvements and acquisitions for and by the city of Trenton and the County of Mercer, state of New Jersey. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettner. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 24-049, ordinance providing for and establishing procedures for executive sessions of city council. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettner. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
No.
Noted. Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Onto resolutions. Madam President, are there any items that you wish to extract from a possible consent agenda this evening?
So we would take out 24-330, right, because that was for the executive session.
Right.
Does council have any that they would like to question before we move to exec... consent agenda?
Uh, Council President?
Yes.
I have 329.
One second. 323... Hold on.
327.
Wait a minute, Councilwoman.
Oh, sorry about that.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's right here. 329. You said 327.
327, and then 328.
Okay.
319. And just a suggestion for 054, but I could frame that as a question at that time.
You said 0...
054, the language for documents. Secondary, 024054, regarding a program for dissemination of certain forms.
That's not on here. That's not on this.
Oh, shoot, that's on the ordinances. My bad. I'm sorry.
And that's not this meeting.
Oh, that got pulled too?
It was pulled.
Uh, no, that item was pulled.
Oh, I didn't catch that. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members with questions about any items?
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
24-313.
24-313. Okay. Any other council members with questions?
Madam President, did you want to go through those resolutions named first and possibly handle those for roll call? And then handle consent agenda thereafter?
Yes. Is that how we've been doing it?
I'm just asking.
So let's move to the discussion. We'll move to the discussion and see if we're gonna move them on to the consent agenda. So we'll start with 24-329. Go ahead, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, ma'am. So my question just says more so for public dissemination, so there's no confusion. This change would be authorizing the sale of alcoholic beverages, obviously, Unit Square Park pursuant to a social affair permit, meaning it would designate the park as a location where alcohol is available as long as a permit would be filled out, approved, and so forth. So is that a change from what exists presently? I just wanted to make sure, because...
Oh, Councilwoman, I'm sorry. So this actually, this actually is, they're having an event, the Ecuadorian Civic Association.
Oh, it's for a specific event?
Yeah. It's them having an event there. And so, they need the permit for them to do what it...
But this is, so this is a normal course. It's not changing the location. Okay, that's why I just wanted to verify. Thank you.
Right, no.
Because I did get a call that that was from a person's concern about a lot of noise around that area, that they was gonna permanently make the park a alcohol-designated area.
Yeah.
Because of the one festival.
Right.
Thank you.
It's their Ecuadorian Independence Day celebration on August 18th.
Yep, okay, so it only survives for that one day?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you. So we can move in.
Consent, please, yeah.
Thank you. Okay. 24-313, Councilwoman Edwards.
Thank you. I just wanted to get some clarity on this. I've received an overwhelming amount of correspondence from many Trenton residents on both sides of the fence, in favor of this, and some that are opposed to it. And I wouldn't be doing my due diligence as their representative if I didn't address their concerns. So with that being said, there have been some accusations that has been brought to the forefront about the owner of Trenton Makes Incorporated. So apparently, there was a tax lien sale on the property before. And from the concerns of the public is, why are we trying to give someone money who is not paying their taxes? And I don't think that that's an entirely accurate or fair assessment. If it is, I would like to know more information about what's going on and see if we can find a resolution for this.
Okay. Council President.
Yes.
Jim Beach, Chief of Staff. Councilwoman, we're not aware of any tax lien that's on this property. In fact, when they filed their application, they need to provide certification that their taxes are up to date as well as their business license being current, and all that documentation was provided with the application.
Awesome. And there is no other outstanding issues with the property or with the applicant or anything like that that we should be concerned about?
Not that I'm aware of concerning this property, no.
Okay. And so, I mean, that answers all of my questions. I don't know if anyone else has any other concerns.
Okay. Can we, you want to move it to consent agenda? Or you want to roll call it?
I would say roll call it.
Okay.
Just so, or, you know, I wanted to get a little bit more clarity because I did receive a certificate of sale for unpaid municipal liens for $17,000 for tax year 2023. So if there's nothing on file, then where did this come from?
I'm not aware of that, Councilwoman.
Okay. So should we be looking into this further, or if the person is here, should we have a discussion?
The individual is here.
So, Mr. Pot, if you could come and address the council about that?
Good evening, Council. Thank you for the question. Roland Pot, 113 South Montgomery Street, President of Trenton Makes Inc. There was a tax lien that was paid off. Again, this is, without putting a long story on it, you know, this is actually all part of the COVID relief question that we're, that is at hand. We did fall behind. We were able to get caught up. And now, we're looking to get caught up on additional maintenance and improvements to the property as well. So it's not been easy, but we did pay off the tax lien, and we're actually paid through the third quarter of 2024. We've already paid this quarter. Thank you. Any other questions?
No, I don't have any.
Okay, thank you for the question. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We will still roll call it because she has to.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. So we will move to...
Thank you, Council President. My question with this is, and I'm supportive of it, I just wanted to get an idea how many people were expecting to serve with the $275,000.
Good evening, Council members. It's 110 people.
Throughout the entire year, 110 a night, or?
Yes, throughout the year. This is a one-year extension. So that is what we are basically sponsoring.
Okay, and is that consistent with what we've supplied before?
Yes, yes. This is a, this is basically a three-years, it's a yearly contract, but with two years' extension, and each one of the years is the same amount.
Okay, thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Consent, please.
Thank you. 24-328.
So my question regarding this is, because it's worded as in the resolution itself, the title, Roebling Machine Shop. So I take it that is a different building than the Roebling Wire Works?
This is actually the Roebling Wire.
I was gonna say, just a different.
Yes, yes. And this is, as I mentioned before, the renovation, the rehabilitation work for this building is going to be around $14 million. So we are just writing grants, one after the other, trying to get at least to the $7 million that will allow us to stabilize the building.
Well, thank you very much, because as you know, this is the building that did the wire up for the Golden Gate and the Brooklyn.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks.
Consent, please.
Thank you. 24-319.
Hello, Council.
How you doing, sir? So my question regarding this is, do you have a rough idea, if approved, when this work may get started as far as in the completion and so forth? Because South Warren Street, there's a lot of interest in having this, of course, happen, as you well know.
Oh, Council, Council President. There's no time that we know this is gonna happen. This is just a apply for the grant. And we don't know when the state's gonna give us a grant. So this, I don't see...
So this is basically a start on the funding for that? Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Council President?
Yes.
I just want to know, do we have a specific amount that we're applying for? Because I didn't have one listed.
No, we don't.
You just applied for it, they need to...
Normally, they give us enough to do what we have to do.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you.
Consent, please.
Thank you. Right. And I just have a quick question for 24-325.
Good evening, Council President. Council members. Sean Sample, Director of Water and Sewer.
Thank you. I'm gonna leave it for, I'm gonna leave it on consent, but I just want us to... So it's for the armed security guard services. When we had, when I spoke during docket review, I asked a question about if we had armed security there during the evening as well, only because of the cars that were broken into on site and because of the concerns with now you all are gonna be shutting water off and all that other kind of stuff, the construction guys coming in and out just to be safe. And when I was there working previously, I know I felt a lot safer working overtime, coming out at night with just armed presence there. They spoke about looking to do something or bring them in the next year. But I just want to hear your standpoint on having armed security there around the clock or in the evenings.
So, in the past, we did have armed security at Cortland.
Yeah.
Previous city council.
They took it away.
They took away both. We never even had. This is when the break-in starts. So immediately, we got the regular security guards in for this year. And next year, we're gonna elevate it to the armed security guards, for sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I would prefer that, but budgetary-wise, for this year, it's a problem for us.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Director. All right. May I have a motion to approve the following for consent agenda? No. Yes? Can I do it?
Madam President, it's your meeting, Madam President. I just wanted to remind you if there is a walk-on resolution.
Oh.
I don't know whether you wanted that to be on consent or not. And Madam President, if you would be so kind as to read the title of that walk-on resolution, as I believe I forfeited my copy.
Oh, my God. You know how I do with papers. Okay.
Me, and I'll do it.
So it's a resolution titled, "Resolution Authorizing the Use of New Jersey Cooperative Purchasing Alliance, Number CK04 Purchasing System, Number 11-B-E-C-C-P Awarded to Safeway Contracting, Inc., 2461 Iorio Street, Union, New Jersey, 08, I mean, 07083, for roof replacement at Trenton Waterworks Distribution Complex at 333 Cortland Street, in an amount not to exceed $238,800." So basically, the roof fell in over there at Cortland Street. They need to get this fixed. It's important, because you got people working there. And so, they asked them if we could go ahead and approve this resolution to use these people to fix it. Any council people have any objections to this being put on consent agenda? Okay, consent.
Understood.
Thank you.
And go right ahead with your motion.
Mr. Garcia, what's the number?
Uh, we will assign that. The numbers are out of sequence, so I'm gonna have to look for the highest one and assign a number. I imagine that's 329.
I see it's 330.
332.
Let's see, 330. I think it would be, I think it's 330. No, there's a 331.
I'm being told that the number, this would be 332.
Yep.
Thank you.
So 24-332. Okay. May I have a motion to accept the following to consent agenda? Resolution numbers, 24-329, 24-308, 24-309, 24-310, 311, 312, 314, 315, 316, 317, 327, 318, 328, 319, 320, 321, 322, 323, 324, 325, 326, 331, and 332.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettner. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, moving on to the roll call resolution.
Yes.
And Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve Resolution 24-329? Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought it was 313.
I apologize. I'm marking this more than once.
May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-313?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettner. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Epstein.
Noted. Noted. Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. And moving on to ordinances for first reading and introduction. Ordinance twenty-four dash zero five one, ordinance amending Chapter one forty-six, licensing Article nine, cannabis businesses of the Code of the City of Trenton to ban and penalize illegal and unlicensed cannabis operations. Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettnerberg. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-four dash zero five two, ordinance authorizing the acquisition of certain real properties, commonly known as eight seventeen to eight nineteen, eight twenty-one, eight twenty-three, South Warren Street,